Okay. Um, good evening. I call this meeting to order on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at five oh two P M. Um, Heather, if I can please give a roll call?
Sylvia.
Sylvia, I'm sorry. Student trustee Carnes, did I say Heather?
Yeah.
Doctor Little. Trustee Lopez.
Aye. Let me present. Right, sorry.
Trustee Ramos.
President.
Trustee Dopplemore.
President.
President Calhoun.
Doctor Curry.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, uh, item one on the agenda to approve the closed session agenda items. Item two point zero one, negative motion.
Still move.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussions? And we need a roll call vote? For that enough?
Yes.
It'll, it'll have another discussion. All right, thank you. Any discussions? There's none. This is not. Okay. You want, you want a second minute? You need a minute?
No, it's just not, this, the page is not.
Okay. So what is your vote?
Aye.
Me too, trustee Ramos?
Aye. Yeah, I, I, I'm just one.
Oh. That's again, I was yes vote. Okay, thank you. Um, item number, so now we adjourn, right? Number three? Adjourn for closed session?
Not yet.
Not yet. Three is request to address the board. Um, item three, do we have any requests to address the board on closing into item matters?
No, we do not.
Okay. Now. Um. Do we have a, we don't have any requests, right, for future agenda items? Now do we adjourn for closed session? After roll call?
Yes.
Okay, can I take a roll on that? To adjourn to?
No, you don't have to.
Now?
Okay.
Adjourn for closed session? Okay. Adjourn for closed session. Then we have. Right, there's no future on them, but.
What?
Then it looks easier than.
That was eight years ago.
No, I logged in, but it gets those.
No, yeah, I mean, my, my board, uh, the, the, the. Where is this?
The board? Board meeting?
Yes.
The report, I'm sorry, kidding. When you still have.
It doesn't.
I'll see you. If you've started one time, no problem. You don't have work.
Sylvia, is your scoreboard like really high up like that? Like? We shouldn't be that far in yet, should we?
Uh, no, I'm at three point oh two. I'm, I'm. I'm not doing point oh two. It's, it's not moving. Maybe if I try to go lower. I'm trying to go lower. Oh, maybe because I.
He's working, sorry, come on, he's giving a.
Yes, you're right. I call this meeting to order on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at six oh five P M. Roll call, please. Student trustee Carnes.
President.
Doctor Little. President. Trustee Lopez.
President.
Trustee Ramos.
President.
Trustee Dopplemore.
President.
President Calhoun.
President.
Doctor Curry.
Here.
Item two oh one, approval of the closed session agenda, can I have a motion?
Um, no, I'm not, uh. Yeah, girl, five on five. Not two.
Which?
Five oh two right now.
Pledge of allegiance. You said five and somebody said two. Doctor Little, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thirty-one, please place the flag right here over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States and. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Now, I'm like, uh.
Hey, did I have it wrong? In closed session, on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the board of trustees approved the F P B C case number twenty-two slash seven nine five. Stipulation, decision, and audit. The roll call vote was as follows. Four over. And. Andreas Ramos, a board member, was absent. In closed session, the board took action to deny an appeal from the administrative determination concerning an employee's complaint of discrimination. The roll call vote was as follows. Five over. In closed session, the board took action to approve the claim of Flora Ortiz of one thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. The roll call vote was as followed, was five over. We are at seven point oh one. Approval of open session agenda. Doctor Curry, do we have any corrections or additions to the agenda?
I have two corrections uh, on item number twelve points one five. Each start date should be October eighteenth. And item number twelve point one two, should be October eighteenth that it started. Those are my corrections.
Twelve point one two and twelve point fifteen, both of them started October eighteenth.
Correct.
Right. Do we have, can I have a motion? Or move?
Second.
Moved by trustee Little, second by trustee Ramos. Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Carnes. Doctor Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calhoun, no discussion. See and no discussion, please place your online vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. Item eight oh one. Request to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda matter. Pursuant to board policy two, three, five, zero, published participation. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda matter. Speakers have a three-minute time limit. Miss Sylvia. Kevin Smith, automotive student.
How y'all doing?
All right.
Uh, my name is Kevin Smith, and I'm in the auto body collision class. And I'm here to speak on behalf of some of the students. When the teacher told us the other day that we had eight weeks to get our projects out of there and we won't be able to come back. But at the same time, it's been at least seven weeks that we haven't had the equipment to work with. All the welding machines were down. The sand blaster, the powder coating, everything we needed to do these cars with, and what he was saying was, he didn't want any more restoration jobs in there. But they're doing restoration in here other than us, but it's just like it's a discrimination type of thing to me because I got seventeen students enrolled in that class. I got about five enrolled in the welding class. And I also got some homeless people enrolled into the school. And we don't really feel it's fair for him to tell us that we gotta get all of our stuff out of there in eight weeks, when prior to that, seven weeks, we haven't had anything to work with. And I've been bringing my own machine, my own wire, everything I need, I got my son enrolled. He went and bought his machine, bought the wire, but when I first came to the school, I've been gone about two years now. All the equipment was always there. We never had a problem with anything. And now all of a sudden, we don't have anything to work with. And they're saying, and they're saying that, um, we're taking up too much space. But there are a lot of vehicles there that don't belong to the students. And we've been working on the outside and not being able to work on the inside. And that's basically what it's about, and there's a few more people that want to come and speak, but they're running a little bit late. And the reason why I'm saying what I'm saying, and I, I feel this way. When I came, there were maybe black, five black students there. And there was other races there. Now the majority is blacks. I do restoration sheet load work, I build custom cars. This, and another thing is that with the cars that we build, they sell from a hundred thousand and up. The teacher wants us to work on these new cars to where we can't even get seventy-eight thousand dollars for, so we feel like why should we put our time in these new cars when we can get from a hundred to three hundred thousand for the cars that we build? And I've been doing it for over thirty-five years.
Thank you.
And I just don't feel like we're getting treated right.
We don't answer.
Oh, I'm done?
We don't go back and forth.
Okay.
But we do listen to what you have to say.
Okay, thank you.
You're so welcome, thank you. Jacqueline Barra.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Barra. The truth is the light, and will shine. This afternoon, I'm that light on behalf of Emily B. Hart Holyfield, whose name has not been replaced outside of the library here at Compton College. Emily served as a beacon at this college. Now, Doctor Curry and the facility committee stated that the family agreed to the name Holyfield Library. And when I finish speaking, you all will get a copy of everything, so I'm just gonna give you excerpts of what I'm presenting to you tonight, okay? This letter is dated May ninth, twenty twenty-two, to Doctor Keith Curry. My name is Ms. Tamika Lynn Black, granddaughter of Emily B. Hart Holyfield. I'm writing to request a renaming of the Student Success Center to Emily B. Hart Holyfield. That's what it was originally presented to him. And I guess that facility committee that he orchestrated, okay? And then she goes on to say, the Compton College Board of Trustees voted in favor of Emily B. Hart Holyfield Library in nineteen ninety-seven during Women's History Month. And then I'm gonna drop down, Mrs. Holyfield passed away April the fifth, twenty twenty-two. This is the next month after she did this original, this was the original request, okay, Doctor Curry? Following this letter, this is in September. That was in May that I just finished explaining to you. The facilities committee would like Mrs. Black to submit an update request in writing to properly document the request. So apparently, they didn't accept her request. And so he wrote April tenth, twenty twenty-two. Dear Doctor Keith Curry again, okay? My name is Tamika Lynn Black. We're requesting the renaming of the Library Student Success Center. Holyfield Library. See, I know when somebody's been getting run around for what they originally requested. Now, I know I don't have the three minutes. And this is sad. This has been going on since twenty twenty-one. And this is my last time this year here. And I'm telling you, as a taxpayer in this city, we are deemed to be heard, okay? Trust me, I will be leading a recall up here on you all next year if you do not comply to, like we said, what was grandfathered in here. I didn't do it, the community did it, okay? So my name is Jacqueline Barra. Rest in peace, Emily, I shall return. God bless you all, good night.
Rudolph Horace, automotive student.
Hello, everyone, how are you?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm just basically here because in the auto restoration class, we're being told that we have to move the vehicles and, uh, they say that we have eight weeks to move the vehicle, but they're constantly sending, uh, flyers out to my home, come join Compton College, come sign up for the college, come sign up for the college, I'm a senior citizen. So my, I have a classic truck. Uh, my truck was hit, so I wanted to restore it and, and, and learn how to do this stuff myself, so I brought it to the school. I signed up, I've been coming to the classes, I've been trying to learn to do what I'm supposed to do in the class, and now I'm being told that it's an auto restoration class, I mean, it's a, uh, it's a, uh, uh, auto collision class, not a restoration class, but when you have your car, uh, when it is in a collision, it has to be restored anyway. So they're basically the same thing, you know, I, I, I don't know, I just wanna know who made the rule where we have to move this car, uh, in eight weeks and, uh, you know, I mean, I just wanna know, so I can talk to them and find out, why do we have to move the car? I, I'm still a student here, I, I, I'm working on my project, you know, uh, I've learned how to weld since I've been here. Uh, I'm learning about putting, uh, the different body fillers and, and, uh, trying to use all the different machines, you know, they have, uh, all the high-tech machines that they use on TV, restore your cars in there, you know, a lot of people don't use them, they don't know how to use them, but I'm trying to learn how, you know? So I'm just trying to find out, who do I talk to to find out about this eight-week move of my vehicle, you know, uh? If I have to move it, 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 you know, uh, I can't work on my car. They have all the equipment here, the welding and everything. So do I have to go to city council and find out, who, who do I have to ask, or, I, I, you know? I just want to be able to work on my vehicle as a senior citizen, this is what I do as a senior citizen. I, I come to the school, I enjoy being here, I enjoy learning, I've been a respiratory practitioner before I retired for thirty-three years. And this is what I do for my pastime, you know, so I wanted to like to know why do I have to move my vehicle? Okay, as a student. And I, they have my phone number, or somebody can tell me something. Thank you.
Black, would you go inside?
Oh, first speaking on item sixteen.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Okay. Item eight oh two. Compton Community College District Board of Trustees, future agenda item. Student trustee Carnes.
Some people do the item.
I'm sorry.
No future agenda items.
Doctor Little.
Um, continued update on our vocational programs, um, we've been providing thorough presentations. Um, with like information on some of the programs heard about tonight, the automotive, you know, uh, the differentiation tool courses and, um, ensuring required curriculum versus employment. Opportunities as it relates to that field. That's it for now.
Trustee Lopez.
Nothing's on.
Trustee Ramos.
I don't have anything.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No future agenda items.
President Calhoun. Aye. Uh. I think, I think we did this before. I think Heather gave an update, but I don't remember when the last one was on the advertising. We did our advertisement, I think she gave it up. Just where we are with it, yeah. Then am I wrong, did we hire a firm uh, to look into the personnel commission yet, you know, with? I don't remember, I thought we were going, I'm not sure. We did that. For a fix-up or whatever it is to do the personnel commission rules and regulations. Or when it comes back in twenty twenty-six? Five?
It's, it's not a legitimate, I can respond to that in there, Dave.
Okay. Later day. Okay. There was something else, but I didn't write it down, so we're gonna move on. Item nine oh one. Minutes of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three Board of Trustees meeting. Can I get a motion? Motion by student trustee Carnes. Second by student, I'm sorry, trustee Lopez. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Carnes. Doctor Little. Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calhoun, no discussion. See and no discussion, please place your online vote. The motion carries. Item nine oh two, minutes of the October fifth, twenty twenty-three, special Board of Trustees meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion for.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Moore, second by Ramos. Do we have any discussion? Student trustee Carnes.
Oh, second.
Doctor Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Ramos.
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calhoun, no discussion, see and no discussion, please place your online vote. The motion carries. I think I'm able to finally say this name correctly. If I don't say it correctly, please, uh, get me, but, uh, first we have item ten. Reports from representatives and employee organization. Ten point oh one, associate student government report, Krista Moore. Ten point oh two, academic center report.
No report.
Why did I say your name, I'm trying to get it right. Okay, tell me if I got it right, Doctor Minador Mo Do Do. Do.
Vanu.
Vanu, Vanu, okay, I'm gonna get it, I'm getting it, Vanu, okay, I'm working on it. And you said no report, correct? All right. Ten point oh three, C C C F E, certificated employees report, Jeanette Morales. Ten point oh four, C C C F E, classified employees report, Amakwa McKinney. Item eleven, presentations. Doctor Curry.
Uh, the first presentation we have is the Compton College Guided Pathways presentation, which will be, uh, Doctor Sherry Berger and also Nicole Jones.
Good evening, President Calhoun, Board of Trustees, President Curry, and all who work and serve at Compton College. I'm Nicole Jones, Vice President of Student Services, my colleague will be here in a moment, uh, Doctor Sherry Berger. We are here today to present on our work with the guided pathways at Compton. Here's our update. So, uh, table of contents, we're gonna start with a refresh of our completion by design. Completion by design framework, talk a little bit about our guided pathways work and our committee purpose. How we're transforming the student experience here at Compton College. All of our most recent accomplishments from the last academic year since we presented, uh, to you last time. Um, we're also gonna discuss our institutional set goals, our North Stars, our strategic goals, as well as our action steps. And then we'll also give a little update on our most recent guided pathways institute, uh, number five, that was held recently at Oakland, California. So the completion by design model is our framework for all the work that we do here with guided pathways, as you know, we are transforming our institution to really help support our students from connection through transition into either, uh, transfer opportunities or careers and or both. Um, so as you see here, we have really worked hard to keep everything within the framework of guided pathways. Connection is really that initial interest of our students as they, um, as we gauge their interest in the college, the work that we do out in the community for students before they apply. Entry enrollment through the completion of our gatekeeper courses, progress, completion, those are really our, our, our aspects of our completion by design model where our persistence and retention efforts help helping students get through, um, seventy-five percent of their requirements and then also to complete their course of study through a potential, um, as well. And then hopefully they transfer, they move on to a living wage position, um, and or they complete a degree or a certificate here at our institution. So here we have our committee purpose, again, our, our purpose of our committee is to develop, implement, and monitor student engagement and programs for the student, for student success with an equity mindset, so guided pathways is the equity initiative that we're working with and is supported throughout our chancellor's office and all throughout the state of California. The guided pathways, uh, committee will use our completion by design framework to improve each stage, stage of our student experience through, again, connection, entry, progress, completion, and transition. So on this slide, um, this is really a refresher of all the work that we've done here at Compton College since twenty seventeen with our launch. Um, as we've transformed the student experience, just looking at how we can get our hands around this humongous initiative that is really to transform institutions, provide more equitable opportunities for students, and really focus our work on those that are, um, that have not been able to get through to the finish line. And so you can see, we started off with, um, uh, a lot of conversation, um, really examining how this initiative would fit within Compton College. Um, looking at, um, through sense-making, how we can support it, you see some institutional efforts that have been, such as hiring a director of I E. Um, looking at how we were gonna frame and shape our work and meta-majors, um, which also led to the development of program maps um, in twenty nineteen, and so now in twenty nineteen, we're taking action, and all of this is, you know, an ongoing iterative process where we're engaging our campus community through the guided pa- pathways committee work, but also through what, um, evolved in terms of our charter success teams. through the guided pa- pathways committee work, but also through what um evolved in terms of our charter success teams. Um, charter success teams being boots on the ground to really support the work that we're doing with our students by providing additional services like our early alerts that has received a lot of recognition. Um, then we go into twenty twenty where we have momentum. Um, and we had opportunity in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty to visit other institutions that had successfully implemented this initiative. Um, and so in twenty twenty, we had opportunity to look at uh what Georgia State was doing, um, looking at a digital equity walk. Um, just additional work and how we're really fine-tuning and framing the work that we need to do. We became a part of achieving the dream. Um, and achieving the dream has really helped us to, 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 to continue support our work. Um, uh, and looking at um how we're going to implement the programs unique to Compton College. We also became a part of work with regards to Dr. Ron Johnstone, College Futures Foundation, and became a part of the California Guided Pathways Project, um, which we'll hear a little bit about later on. In twenty twenty one, um, as a part of our guided pathways work, we committed a SOA, um, which was really an evaluation opportunity for us to do a lot of reflective work in terms of our progress and guided pathways. We continue to um attend our California Guided Pathway Institute. We did a lot of work, um, convening the SWAG committee, um, guided pathways, um, uh, our guided pathways divisions. They wanted to brand uh their, their divisions and, and to have um, uh, swag that they could show their, their, their support for their areas. Um, our early alert program has been phenomenal. We have done a lot of work in student retention and persistence with early alert. And um, that also happens through our charter success teams. Again, we continue uh attending our institutes. Um, in twenty twenty two, um, we really tried to dig into the work of the committee and reframing how we can really structure the committee to be more successful and to reach, uh, you know, more of our students and expand our reach. So we looked at um revising our North Stars. We set more uh goals. We aligned our goals with our institutional set goals. We also updated the roles and responsibilities manual because a big chunk of the work that we did that year with regard to making sure that um, every person who was a part of guided pathways on the committee, but not just uh the committee, the, the success teams understood what their role and responsibility was for student success in that capacity. And then now here we are in twenty twenty three, where we have um completed a really humongous project, which was our work plan, and got that successfully submitted in spring. We attended another guided pathways institute. Um, and I will say one thing about our guided pathways institutes for this year, you know, President and CEO, Dr. Keith Curry, um, was able to help um, us continue some of the work and, and the learning that happened at the guided pathways institute by framing these um projects around either task forces or work groups that you may have heard about, for us to continue doing the work that we need to do to help um successfully implement guided pathways here at Compton College. And this fall, so far, we've only had two meetings, but we've still dug in and done quite a bit of work in terms of creating our action steps, which we'll hear a little bit about later on. So for our twenty-two, twenty-three accomplishments, we really wanted to highlight our roles and responsibilities. That was a lot of uh, uh, conversation and dialogue um, in a comprehensive manner with the committee and all of our constituency groups being recommended, represented in terms of um the roles and responsibilities of each member of the, of the success teams. Um, the guided pathways work plan, again, early impact, uh, early alert, illusion, impact award. And then looking at how we're operationalizing case management. Um, student success teams had a retreat to really discuss how we could dig into a case, uh, doing and providing more case management. And then also utilizing text messages and emails to nudge our students and CRM advice and having our dashboard to help um really be intentional about how we're reaching those students, in particular, those students who have um achieved a certain amount of units, like forty-five units towards graduation, and making sure that we know that you're almost at the finish line. Here's opportunity to come in and, and complete your, your program of study.
All right, so. Um, so as a committee, we continuously look at our institution set goals related to where we should be going. So we identified North Stars last year uh around successful enrollment, our fall to spring persistence, how many students are in fall continuing on into spring, and how many are completing transfer level English and math. And as we looked at the data, we noticed that successful enrollment has improved and we've reached our goal in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. However, our persistence and transfer level English and math completion rates for first-year students um was not near their goals. Um, and so we decided to continue on with these North Stars for this coming year to continue the work and the progress that we've made um in reaching these goals. So again, same, our, our North Stars again for successful enrollment, persistence, and completion of transfer level English and math. And along with those, we have uh three strategic goals. To strengthen our on-ramps to Compton College students, uh, for new students, returning students, and those who have left. So really looking at how we are onboarding our students from the time we make contact through application and then into enrollment and registration for that term. Looking at our persistence from fall to spring, reteening those students. Uh, making sure that students who are here in the fall continue on in the spring semester and do not stop out. And lastly, looking at um our completion rates and improving our holistic student support for those students enrolled in English one oh one, our freshman composition class, and our transfer level math classes, using the case management through the success team structure. So, along with these um goals, we have our um action steps. So for successful enrollment, we are in the process of implementing CRM recruit, which is a client relation management for making those contacts, having that contact information so we can follow up with those prospective students and help them to um finish application and register into the college. Looking at how we market and advertise our promise program, specifically also including our adult learners. How are we outreach to our adult learners? As you all know, we changed our promise program and now first-time students, regardless of their age or how long they've been out of high school, can benefit from our promise program and using that as a way to target adult learners who never came to college. And then implementing a cohort-based leadership, uh, cohort-based orientation and leadership opportunity through our Blacks and Males of Color Student Success Program. Um, and, and working with a cohort to, to give them the stu- the, the skills to become student leaders um within their community. Looking at fall to spring persistence, we will continue to do our call center campaigns. We're conducting completion campaigns where we send information to students who are near to completion, say forty-five units, to encourage them to complete in the spring. And then following up with our cohort-based orientation leadership, those students becoming ambassadors to other students on campus as peer ambassadors. On transfer level English and math, we will be providing embedded tutors in math and conducting just-in-time workshops. The the results from prior years have been promising and show that students who can take advantage of these opportunities are performing better. Providing training to tutors and culturally relevant strategies. Creating in-reach to those students who withdraw from English and math so that we can help them stay on track, not be discouraged, and conducting focused groups um for students who withdrew, so we understand what their barriers are. Fastly, oh, there you go. Okay. Hop in. Sure. So, uh, as, as VP Jones mentioned earlier, we went to Oakland uh several weeks ago and participated in the California Guided Pathways Institute number five. The focus of this particular institute, there's a different focus every time, was on how do we get the whole college involved in the work of guided pathways and re-engaging everybody, getting that excitement back. As part of the conversations that we had with the team who went, we talked about four additional action steps that align with our North Stars. How do we evaluate student transcripts from external um colleges and their AP transcripts, their AP scores? So when do we evaluate them? When do they get into their degree audit so that we can give better ed plans to the students so that they know what classes they need, don't need, and they're not repeating work they might have already earned credit for? How do we identify students who are on probation? Um, we've even talked about how do we might rename the word probation. Um, and, and so that's part of the conversation here. Um, because that's, we're talking academic and progress relation, and probation just has a very negative connotation.
How do we get students back on track?
Yes. And how do we increase those numbers of student educational plans? We've talked about maybe we can put some tables out so that students who are at the, say, for the farmer's market have an opportunity to get together and, and with, with somebody to get an educational plan or at least get an appointment so that they have a contact there. And then we've created a faculty hub and how do we engage the campus in that faculty hub that provides information to faculty about things that they can then share with their students. So it's not just communicating to the students, communicating to the faculty and staff at the college so that they're aware of the same information the students are getting.
And I would just add with, with um regard to the whole college involvement, one of the things that um this, this institute provides us an opportunity to do is to think about what that means for us. And so when we think about guided pathways, we often think about student services, academic affairs, but this institute also talked about back of the house, right? Business processes, facilities, uh, business office, and so on. And so how everybody has responsibility at the institution for implementing guided pathways. That's very helpful.
Any questions?
Trustee, do we have any questions? Trustee student Collins?
Oh, I have a question. Thank you for the question.
Trustee Lopez? I mean, sorry, Dr. Little.
Thank you so much for the report. Just a couple of follow-ups, as you all were talking about um first-year math. And I know from twenty eighteen, nineteen, or nineteen, it's tripled, but it's still pretty low. Um, what are some of the additional measures besides identification that we're thinking about in terms of either your cohorts? Tutoring.
So the embedded coaches are tutoring, um, and so is the just-in-time workshops. The just-in-time workshops are conducted by faculty um, who teach the classes. They do bring in their own students, but other students from other sections as well. The embedded coaches are peer tutors who are embedded and, and in the tutoring. And we also have our tutoring through the uh library, Student Success Center. Up on the Student Success Center, we have tutoring for um students in the first-level transfer classes. And then we also have through our Mesa STEM Center, um, tutoring for our um, majors math classes, like in calculus and, and higher. So we are providing support through all of those. And then with the implementation of Assembly Bill seventeen oh five, we're looking at how do we provide more access? But one thing I would caution with the numbers is that these numbers are looking at first-year students regardless of when they started.
Yeah.
So it's not the students who necessarily start and then how long, and they get through in one year. It's just looking at, are you a first-year student? Some of our students are not taking English and math in their first years, which is also contributing to the low number. So the question really is, how do we get more students to access? Because we've seen, the, the, the research shows that if you look at from when the student starts, um, not necessarily their first year, but say you start in spring, you have a whole year to complete under AB seven oh five. Um, that data is not captured here. So this is a Student Center Funding Formula metric. So there's different ways of looking at this throughput, but this is the one that we've been using, and that's why our goals are not as high as you'd like them to seem.
So is there a way, if you could find, to give the data then disaggregated based upon if they start in spring? And four year later, and then when we are talking about, you know, um how to really capture those who are taking advantage of tutoring, is there a way to track, not the recurring students, but just what percentage of students taking the class? Let's just say in the spring. Let's say we have four hundred students. What percentage of that four hundred are accessing all of the resources? Not necessarily repeat, but just at least once.
Yeah, we could probably try to get that for prior terms.
Yeah. So. I'm just trying to think if, you know, we have all these resources, but only ten or twelve percent are accessing them, then of course, that would give us a different perspective on the numbers. Mm-hmm. And then our focus could be on how do we increase utilizing the resources at hand. If we have ninety percent is utilized, and if we're still giving those numbers, then it's a different question. So if we can, I don't know how difficult it is to compile that, but it would be really good to know both for English and for math. And I do think it's important that we constantly contextualize. This is not, you know, this is, this is first-year students, not spring to spring or, you know, summer to summer.
Right.
Thank you.
Trustee Lopez.
Thank you for the report. Presentation.
Trustee Ramos.
Yes, um. Who? My, my question is um on, it's, it's on one of the last one. Why the second to the last one, under additional action steps, evaluating transcripts and AP scores? Um, who, who does that? Who evaluates that? And is the current process supposed to that?
The evaluation of prior credit or any external credit is under our missions and records office with our evaluation staff. So anytime a transcript comes in or an AP or IB score, it is evaluated within one to two weeks. And so that's the, the process, but it, it, it goes through the evaluation. Well, it's, it's scanned within one to two weeks, I will say that. The evaluation process is a further down-the-line process that is happening much later in the student's journey. And that's why we've put together this um, this task force to look at how we can improve that process and streamline it and make it more efficient for students.
And my last question. How are, like, how are students being incentivized to take English in that, well, their first year?
So the faculty have been reviewing their program maps because that's one place that students look for the information for which classes to take. Most maps do have English and math in their first year, but not all maps. Um, and not all of them have it in their first semester. So sometimes the longer you wait to take the class, especially in math, then the harder it's, it is to complete. And if you're looking at one year and you started in spring and you don't make it, you wouldn't be in this data as a success, unfortunately. Even if you made it by the end of the first year since you started. So, um, we're looking at the maps to try to see if we can refine them to have that as one place to encourage students to go. The other is the conversations within council.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna add. So with regards to the program maps, that's a, it's a starting point for our students. However, a conversation and access to the counselor is really where you get that customized education plan. Um, the recommendations in terms of what courses you should take when, uh, in the context of what the student needs. And so um working collaboratively with academic affairs, we have a program maps, but also counseling is working hard to make sure that students are informed that they are ready to take those courses and should be taken at the appropriate time.
Hey, I, I just feel as a former student, I, I, I did go to math, but most of, like, family and friends, like, in, in college, like, ma- math, it's just unattractive. People don't wanna take it. A lot of college students wait until the last minute. It's very stress-inducing just thinking about it. Like, oh, I gotta take math. I'm gonna put it off, I'm gonna put it off. And then they can't transfer because they, they, they can't take math. But.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. And it's something that definitely is addressed within the counseling section. It's also in the maps. Um, but it also is something that we are, within our guided pathways framework, mindful of because we want students to complete within with the least amount of time and, and least amount of expense that they can incur while they're here. And so it is important that they complete that and they don't run against that barrier.
Thank you.
Trustee Dalton.
Um, yes, just, um, first, it's just a, um, a follow-up to trustee Ramos' question about the English and math. So in the maths, does it um outline that um those courses, the courses that are required, English and math to transfer to the cast state UCs and the four-year institutions as an outline? Is that part of their transfer or graduation requirement?
Yes.
It is. So it's outlined for the, the, I think I asked this like last time we got the update, for um majors or pathways that are math-centric and versus those that are like not necessarily, so like accounting versus chemistry or something like that.
Every student needs a transfer level English class and a transfer level math class if they're getting a degree.
Okay, that's, that's wonderful. Um, and the next um question that I have is, um, the number of um touchpoints. I appreciate those touchpoints. Um, how, do you know approximately how many touchpoints each student will receive during the semester?
Through the success teams?
Of, okay, so it's not just, so it would be different groups as well?
So the success teams do a lot of work with regards to early alert. Um, and it isn't just about if there's a problem. It also is about, like, you're doing well, you're doing good, keep it up.
Mm-hmm.
And uh
For birthdays.
E- e- exactly. And it exactly. And so um in terms of like what the work and the amount of uh. Contacts that a student or all of our students have within our success teams, we could probably get you some follow-up information on that.
Okay.
If you want that specific number.
And the reason why I'm asking is um and this is what really to support um the efforts from not just the success teams. But all of the different um areas that are doing touchpoints. If the student opts out. Because that can come back and it can look like, you know, if a student is, say, trending poorly, say if there is a problem. But that student, and I'm speaking specifically for text, if a student receives, if they are receiving those text touchpoints. And they opt out, how is there a way to capture that to say, we reached out um say eighty-five percent of that time. We are, you know, we are reaching our students. And then here are the other fifteen or maybe twenty. And it's because those students have opted out of those touchpoints. And I'm just bringing up that point. So later on, when we get like a, you know, a report, it doesn't trend poorly that we're, you know, that you're not necessarily. Doing a proactive approach to kind of reach out to students and students are not reaching back. That's the point. That's one thing I'm trying to, I'm gonna say something back there. Okay. Um, that's just one thing. And as it relates to um the adult learners. With um with the outreach and onboarding, will there be, are are you considering? Um a tailored onboarding approach for adult students? And I'm just thinking because if you're looking at non-traditional students. Then those students, they might have a gap of where, you know, thirty-plus years, a gap. And there might, you know, like I'm speaking in terms of technology and, you know, if they're taking an online class. If there's some type of, I said adjusted, but um say tailored onboarding approach. Additional touchpoints, consideration for a student that's a non-traditional. But like they have thirty-plus years of gap in any type of classroom setting, whether that's in person and or online.
Yeah, so we do have a a counselor who focuses specifically on the adult population. Um we also um are working. With our implementation of CRM recruit on how we can set up specific territories and events that are going to target our adults. Our adult uh student population and training those individuals on um the the best proactive approaches to engage with our student population.
Okay, thank you so very much. And again, I do appreciate um the presentation, um all the work that has been put in. I know that um sometimes with all those touchpoints, that it, you know, it can be difficult because they're just, you know, so what? Are those actually successful or not? But in in your presentation, it does show all of the different um. Pathways, all the different considerations, the efforts that are being made to ensure that our students are um being successful. So again, thank you both very much for that. And that was all I have.
And I think this question was answered, but you know, when I hear a whole lot of stuff, something else comes up to uh yield out. Okay. Where says, and I know you talked about this and you're gonna tell what you did and you did, please don't answer again. Transfer level English were twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, it's twenty-one percent, but you, the goal was forty-eight percent.
So the goal was set actually in twenty seventeen.
Let's go to the next one. Transfer level math. Uh twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, fifteen, and the goal was eighteen.
No. That's why they continue to be our North Stars.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next presentation we have tonight is about the Black and Male Color Success Work of New Year on Campus. We have Dr. Antonio Banks. Who is the director.
Uh, good evening, uh President Calhoun, Board Trustees, President Curry. Uh, my name is Dr. Antonio Banks. I serve as Director of the Black and Males of Color Success Initiative. Uh, and I wanted to just approach the board and share a little bit about what's been going on since the inception of the program uh and looking forward. So tonight, I want to give you a little bit of the context under which the program began its development. Uh, a little bit about the progress and the events that have transpired within the program, some of the external representation. Uh, that we've done with the initiative across the state and across the country. Uh, looking at our staffing, sharing a little bit about the student testimonials uh who have engaged in the program. And then some of the pieces looking ahead. So, uh really quickly, I won't read all of this to you, but essentially, one of the things that uh. That uh helped in the development of this work. When I first got here, Dr. Curry really just said, hey, I'm giving you a blank slate, figure it out. But he knew about my passion for serving both black students as well as male students of color, um and my ability as a researcher and a scholar. Um and some of the things that really stuck out in the development of this plan, uh talked about a couple of different things. We as educators and as a community of educators have to do what we can within our control in order to change the trajectory and the outcomes of our students. Uh, one of the pieces that was discovered by the Community College Success Measure Instrument. Found that interactions, positive interactions with faculty and staff. Uh, had a greater impact on the trajectory of a student than any background factor or external pressure that they might have. That's inclusive of. Uh, housing insecurity, food insecurity, transportation insecurity. If they felt like they had a connection to the campus, they had a connection to staff, they had a connection to their peers, they would be more likely to persist. Also, in the creation of this program, uh we wanted to incorporate some of the work from our President CEO. Uh, in regards to visions for serving uh black-serving institutions. I won't read all of this, but essentially, he stated that we must be unapologetic. We can't have boutique programs that serve a finite number of students. We have to engage all students, uh and all employees in the work of student success on behalf of these students. We have to be intentional and make data-informed decisions. Uh, and we need to be able to create a better value proposition for students. Students are starting to question, what is the value of going to college? So how can we make sure that they understand that it's still worth it? And again, most importantly, being unapologetic. So that is how I'll do the work. Sometimes I'll step on toes, but I know that I'm doing it on behalf of the students. So in our initiative, we assert that the success of all of the students, black students and male students of color. Their success is the responsibility both of the student but also of the institution. We have to be more responsive. Uh, and more proactive in how we approach and how we engage and how we serve these students. Uh, we do a lot of this by way of our programmatic components, uh as well as utilizing the guided pathway structure. Uh VP Jones and VP Berger just talked about a couple of the North Stars uh that we try to contribute to and embed within our institution. I'll share in a second. Uh, some of our other responsibilities include providing consultation, integration and embedding of practices to better support these student populations on campus. Uh, providing professional developments related to these specific populations on campus and fostering an increased sense of belonging. Uh, by way of intentional programming to support the growth, development and success of these students. So our work is embedded in the institution in two particular ways, by way of our retention and persistence plan that's been developed. Uh, we try to ensure that um our adult learners um are invited to all of our programs and initiatives and events. Uh, we try to identify uh dark learner populations for targeted services and provide tailored services to them. And we also try to normalize self-seeking behaviors uh for the academic and basic needs supports of our students. Uh, by way of our initial, our initiative as well as uh through our associated students. Uh, in terms of our guided pathways, we are embedded by way of a couple of different things as it pertains to successful enrollment. Uh, we are focused on developing cohort-based leadership opportunities for students. Uh, they will actually be rolling out next week. One is Level Up and that's uh designed for black women. And then Boss, which is the Brotherhood of Student uh Success Leadership Academy. Uh, it's a four-part series in which students will be engaged in leadership development uh in hopes that they become. Uh ambassadors, peer ambassadors for success across campus. Uh, that also uh ties into the fall and spring persistence in hopes that these students then foster a sense of belonging. And increase uh inclusion for other students on campus. Also, we'll be working uh to provide different culturally relevant uh professional developments for our instructional support. Um, and peer tutors. Now, this work cannot be done in a bubble. That was one of the premises of uh the framework. So while we do exist, we are not able to do any of the work in a bubble. Um, I have lots of different partners across campus who have been influential and uh instrumental in being able to do some of this work. Uh, that's inclusive of professional development, EOPS and CARE, Calworks, uh institutional effectiveness. Uh, and then my across-the-hall neighbors that are very helpful and very uh supportive in a basic needs and student equity. Uh, these are some of the primary partners that we have. However, we work with everybody who wants to work with us on behalf of student success. For black students and male students of color. Um, so data, right? Uh, we always want to make sure that we're making our decision decisions based on data. And what you'll see here is a five-year enrollment span for both black students as well as male students of color. Um, and what you can see is that there was, of course, that that dip. When it came to the pandemic and things like that, uh but we started to rebound so far as our numbers of enrollment. Uh, both for black students as well as male students of color, uh but we do have some work to go. And our efforts hopefully will support that uh continued growth and persistence and retention of these student populations. So so far, in our program, uh we've put on or executed over thirty events. Uh, conferences, workshops and intentional interactions uh that focus on black students as well as male students of color. Uh, we've had the opportunity to expand our staff beyond myself, which now is inclusive of our program technician. As well as our five student assistants. And I'll share a little bit about them in a second. Uh, last year, we had lots of different progress. We were able to identify and get. Five students engaged in the Diamond Leaf Fellowship. Uh, this was a partnership with uh Dr. Flora. He asked me to identify some students. Those students. Had the opportunity to grow as leaders and had a cultivating or a culminating trip uh to South Africa. This year, we have students going through it as well that I identified and their culminating trip will actually be to Egypt, um which is amazing. Um, lots of different things. One of the other things that I was really excited about was we were able to host our very first uh black grad here on campus. And again, to the trustees who were able to attend that. Uh, and then our Summer Scholars Transfer Institute uh leadership. So uh provided leadership as the administrator on duty for both the trip to Clark Atlanta. As well as this most recent trip to uh UC Irvine. Really can't see that one, but this is just kind of a a list of the events that we have going on throughout the fall semester. Uh, we try to do events, usually weekly or bi-weekly, uh usually on Thursdays and these cover lots of different ground. Uh, as it pertains to just improving student success, health-seeking behaviors and things like that. One thing that you'll see voted that I want to invite everybody out to if you have the opportunity. Um, Thursday, November thirtieth, we'll be hosting the first ever Quanta Celebration here um on campus. Um, and we will have a a great speaker that will help curate that event. So I'm excited about that. One of the uh primary components of this work is the Men of Color Task Force. Uh, this is composed of different faculty, staff and students around campus who are engaged in the work of supporting male students of color and their success. Our primary focus is our student engagement, professional uh development and leadership and competency building. Some of our signature initiatives that will come out of that this year include the data practices and policies to support. An engagement of colored professional development scheduled to happen in December. Uh, as I mentioned before, the Brotherhood of Student Success Leadership Academy. Uh, the Men of Color Success Conference uh that will be putting on here on campus. The conference attendance, so that's inclusive of the Men of Color Action Network Conference, the Young Men of Color Conference and the Man Conference. Uh, the Teach Off, which was coined by uh Dr. Joseph Lewis, and this will give faculty and staff across campus an opportunity to showcase how they interact. And engagement of color here on campus. And then the ICU Bro Mentorship Program, which is coming down the pipeline. So this work is critical, right? Not only here on Compton College's campus, uh but across the state and really across the nation. Uh, these two groups, uh being inclusive of black students as well as males of color. Are uh facing some some troubling rates as it pertains to enrollment and student success. And so uh we've been able to take this on a road and share at different uh points. Um, in different opportunities, including the Achievement of Dream Conference. Uh, we had representation at the All African Diaspora Education Summit. Had the opportunity to coordinate that with four faculty members here at Compton College who will be providing. Uh, professional development around African-centered education, which is really communal education and approaching education from that. Lens uh lens. Uh, had the opportunity to present with uh VP Jones at the Chief Student Services Officer Association uh Conference. Uh, just recently, last weekend, at San Diego State, we presented at the Young Men of Color Conference. Uh, had the opportunity to present with Trustee Little at the Man Conference. Uh, we've been in the Inside Higher Education, which is one of the uh premier. Uh publications for higher education. We've actually been in there twice, once at the onset of the program. And then most recently, talking about the impact of higher education on black student fathers. Uh, also on the Chronicle of Higher Education and then PBS uh News Hour. Of course, I had to represent from our team. They're not here, but uh none of this work would be possible without them. If you haven't met them yet, they're a group of very uh vibrant, vibracious, uh dedicated individuals across campus. Uh, many of them actually also serve uh in our associated students now, so that's an interesting intersection of student leadership. Uh, as well as our program technician, uh Daniel uh Viviano. So really just wanted to share a little bit about the impact uh from the student perspective. Uh, one of our students said, I'm thankful for programs like this and people like banks because they don't just look at me and judge me. And they try to find ways to introduce me to something that's different than I'm used to and what I can do if I really want to. Uh, another student said, uh, being a woman in today's time can be challenging mentally, spiritually and physically draining. From raising children, taking care of home and having a work life, being a college student and all. Through the Black and Males of Color Program, I've had the pleasure of being introduced to a walkway. Down a path filled with an understanding of me, my purpose, living in my truth as a black woman and today. Along with communicating my dialogue on life with my ancestors, having a safe space to learn boundaries on various aspects. In my gaining of knowledge and understanding, I've learned how to walk in my softness as a black woman and on my wholeness as a leader. And then lastly, uh student said, shared, although I'm shy and introverted, I've been surrounded by others just like me. In the same path and felt connected to their stories. Along with this, there have been multiple workshops in which I've been able to learn how to be empowered by my background and how to overcome stereotypes placed on me. Or on men, sorry about that. Uh, more importantly, I've learned how to find pride in my culture as a man, learning to find my passion. Values and acceptance. So at the end of the day, uh we're all here as sort of students. And I think these are just a few testimonials that speak to the work uh that we've been able to start and hopefully continue to do with initiative. Again, we will continue to do our programming and getting students to conferences. We actually just found out today that we've been accepted to present at the upcoming. Emoja Conference, so we'll be uh having a panel speak there. Uh, continuing to embed our practices that we have in our center across campus, whether it be with student services or on the academic side. Uh, and then lastly, just a moment of appreciation first and foremost for Dr. Curry for. Throwing this out there and having a vision to make something like this come to light. VP Jones, who has heard. All of my war stories, um and then everybody who I probably had to email once, twice. Once, twice, three, four, or five times if I didn't get something right, uh just thank you for believing in the work and really showing your commitment and dedication to. Uh the success of all Compton College students, but especially black students and male students of color. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Student trustee Khan?
Has the number increased with the students attending your programs and your conferences?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So when we first got started, I think it was a little bit difficult because of where we were located, so to speak. Initially, I was in TB seven, um which is a great space. I don't know if you've ever visited. Um and then we were moved to the Student Success Center, which was still. Uh not a primary spot for student engagement, but since we've moved into the Student Services Building. Um it's really easy to get connected to our center, but also get connected to the other centers. And then most of our programming takes place. Right around the corner from our center and the Student Services Classroom right there as well, so. Um this year so far, our programs have ranged in participation anywhere from about twenty to forty-five students. Um our largest was our Welcome Black Program. That was about seven, eight students, um but we've had pretty consistent participation this year.
Doctor Lou?
Thank you again for the presentation. Um somewhere a question, if not, this is thrown for an answer now, but. The disaggregation of like the year, the major of the students, of the twenty to forty-five that are regularly come. Um are we seeing any, for example, first-year injuries with first-year math? Like where are their obstacles? And where you know the belonging and engagement are essential for overall student success? So I'm not, I'm just wondering, from an academic, strictly academic uh coursework perspective. If there are any ways to connect, be involved in, or the resources, and that's just more like a future question to contemplate. And then in terms of some of the programs and conferences, have we and our students presented themselves? Um or presented with some of the administrators? I know H-Man is coming up. They have the proposal open right now. I'm just wondering if that's an opportunity.
Yeah, so uh the first go-around for the students, I wanted them to really just get a sense for what it was like. Most of the students who were there, that was their first time attending conferences. As I just mentioned, uh this conference that we're about to take students to, I took a group to last year, and this year they're participating. Um we actually just got back from the Young Men of Color Conference where one of our students. Um participated in a session about finding your why, or understanding your why. And I asked him, you know, does he seem to be really moved by that? And he said, you know, this, that was, you know, dope. I I really liked that. I said, hey, do you want to present on that? So we'll be submitting a proposal to him for that. Um and we'll continue to look for ways for them to present. Um on the work that they're doing, our engagement.
I know also, as many of transfer institutions, they have funding for student research. And so just wondering about that next step. And I've just found that especially for. For instance, and just working our logic, don't necessarily see themselves um that getting immersed. In book research and publication tend to uh help to secure their progression and graduation. So thank you so much for your input.
Absolutely. Actually, uh four of our students are actually um employed through the Learning-Aligned Employment Program, which has a component. Where they have to be engaged with some type of aspect of research and assessment and valuation. So in our one-on-ones. That's often what we're going through. We're looking at this aggregated data that the institution provides, but also looking at our internal. Uh assessments, like post-assessments of our programming, and looking at, you know, the qualitative part and also the quantitative, but also looking at how we can improve our programming. For next time. So uh they're they're coming around. That's a part of my background is being really steeped in data and research, and so. Uh that's something I hope to pass on to them.
Thank you. Very great line to the work and thank you so much.
Trustee November. Trustee Rose.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Dr. Moore.
Yes, I do have a question. Um Mister, um Dr. Banks. Your um initiatives and your partnership with the other departments on on that particular slide. Um in that, the the other um segment of students. For uh formerly incarcerated and veterans, is that the are those areas, are they covered in any of these groups? I don't know exactly where they are, but are they under one of these umbrellas?
Uh through through basic needs and and uh basic needs and student equity. Uh and by way of a membership from our best coordinator, Dr. Lewis, he's a part of our Men of Color Task Force. Um but there could be a way uh to explore. Um how to uplift and support veteran students. I think a little bit more that hasn't been a spot that we've concentrated on specifically as of yet. Uh but definitely a point of consideration with that word.
Okay, so if they're covered under one of the umbrellas, that's great. And I forgot to say start now first, but I'll say it right now. I see you, bro. Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh so my uh my next thing, what I uh one of the things that I pointed out is um knowing that. Um uh again, the job, just knowing traditionally in surveys and other. Um you know, data, we know that um for African-American students and. Um students of color, first generation, that the that the planco has not been very level, right? So in terms, and and again, I appreciate you and the team. Um and just all the departments as well for helping to remove those barriers, um you know, for students, because we know that. Um you know, a lot of times it's not easy. You like there was the other department, so a lot of times you're reaching out. You're reaching out, but what are you, how are you ensuring that when you're reaching out to those students? That you're being, you know, that they're, you know, that they're actually receiving it, right? So they're kind of um reaching back. And just taking advantage of all the different, you know, all the different initiatives, right? That that's one thing I'll say. Um and the second part, I wanted to talk about, yeah, I'm talking about removing the barriers. We know one in particular for students is um um finances, right? So how to pay for, you know, pay for college. So if you have the choice of. Um whether do I put food on the table um versus paying for tuition with working with some of the other departments. For example, do you, do you do that handoff to those other departments and ensure? You know, with, you know, run on the fine, you know, the financial aid and and all the other um programs. So can you speak on that just a little bit? Like some of that work and how that process will um is carried out?
Absolutely. So uh when I was first hired, I was really worried about that piece, um as I thought that we would have to be. A all-inclusive stop.
Yeah.
Um and Dr. Curry alleviated a lot of that that initial stress um in the sense that, you know, he said. We need to act as a hub, right? And getting students more connected and familiar with the services that we have on campus. We have a robust. Set of services across campus. Um but if they find a way to you first, develop that rapport, figure out, you know. Through informal assessment, what it is that they need, and then by way of us being placed in the Student Services Building. It's very easy. I walk people over to Mr. Willis all the time, over to EOPS all the time. Um because I I personally don't have funds to give out, but I can get them to the person who can help them with the resources and things like that that they need.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so very much. It's always a pleasure.
The veterans, what she was talking about, the veterans, right? The uh in in the development with the uh veterans, like do you reach out to like uh send information to like the West LA VA? Or either the Long Beach VA and try to get students, or is that out of our area? That's out of our areas?
The financial, the financial office.
Okay, so I don't, okay. I have no questions. Uh thank you very much. Oh, you did say something on Dr. Curry. Thank you so much for your uh fantastic report. That was great. Thank you for your presentation.
Questions?
Uh the next presentation, we have student equity achievement. We have uh Ladele Willis, who is the director of basic needs student success. I just got it right. Don't don't confuse me. Good evening, everybody. Good evening. President Go home, President Kirk, members of the board, cabinet members. I'm sorry, right? Um so short presentation, and I just want to talk about uh one, uh some of the programs in the Student Equity Achievement Office. Cause um our fist program and also our FKCE program. And then also, I just want to. More recap and update on our SCA program that we went over and approved of last year. So just want to talk about those things. So uh first, I just want to uh talk about a foster care, a foster kinship care education program. I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Pamela Hemmer-Graffy. She's been associated with Compton College for thirty-six years. Uh she keeps telling me she's gonna retire, but if you ever had a bacon, I won't let her. So. She keeps bringing peach cobbler, so she's not allowed to retire. But uh she's been working with Compton College for thirty-six years, and that's thirty-six years of training our foster parents. And training uh our county representatives and working with DCFS and everybody associated with working with a foster for this long time. So because of her, we have a great program here of training and also uh helping bridge those connections for students that. Come from these foster families directly to Compton College. So uh those FKCE classes, just so you know, they are mandatory. Every foster parent. Uh wannabe foster parent, parent foster parent has to take these classes. They're. Situated at different colleges around the area, but we work specifically with this area with Compton. And as you can see, uh we partnered with DCFS and Family Services, all that stuff. And uh our biggest uh things are Christmas event this year. That we have, and we partnered with Southwest uh Compton Mayor's Office, and it's annual, this is gonna be the second annual. Where we provide gifts to the parents of the foster families and also some of the young kids in the household. So I just wanted to give that a shout out. You'll be getting more information about that as we go along. And it's just an example of the schedule of classes that uh Ms. Godfrey provides. So since we are back on campus now, it was just virtually, but I know we have a lot of older foster parents. Sometime they have trouble getting that zoom down and getting your certificates. So uh Pam was happy to bring it back on campus. So we have uh one, one class on campus a week, then one class remotely. And this example of this schedule for them. All right. Uh right now, I want to bring up Dr. Joseph Lewis to talk about our fist program and give you a little updates on that. I know maybe about two years ago, there was some concerns, some concerned about our fist program, but I want to bring Dr. Lewis up so he can tell you some updates what's going on.
Lewis, thank you. Good evening, the board. Fist is back. Took a couple of semesters to get it back on its feet, but we have forty students now. That uh are a part of the program. And uh I've designed the program to where it's student-driven. So we have some student workers who are FIS members, who are helping with the operation of the FIS program. And facilitating our Thursday meetings. We have Thursday meetings. Every Thursday, we have around about fifteen students that participate in those. Out of the forty on a weekly basis. Uh our partnership with the Harvard Region parole division. Uh from the Department of Corrections, uh we've reestablished our partnership with them. And we meet every last Thursday of the month where we introduce people who have. Who are in the reentry process, who just got out the last thirty to sixty days to community resources. Uh and there's around about twenty-five to thirty community resources, including the resources here at Compton College. That introduce themselves to the sixty-five. Participants in those monthly meetings. And out of those monthly meetings, we have around about twenty who sign up with us. That are interested in continuing their education. And out of that twenty, we have around about five who actually follow through. And enroll in classes. So that contributed a lot to our growth from uh what was it? Five to forty. So um we're doing a a great job in developing that uh cohort. And Thursday meetings are very interesting. We present resources at those Thursday meetings. And right now, we're doing a um. A series on mental health, and we thought that was important to explore because our formerly incarcerated students. Are faced with a lot of challenges. Uh they just got out. They're trying to sort through the trauma. I call it the triple trauma, the trauma that they were experiencing before they went to prison, the. Trauma that they experienced while in prison and the trauma that they're experiencing when they re-enter the community. So the program is designed to treat their impatience. It's designed to treat their um. Their confidence and and it's just a a day-to-day balancing act. In uh managing their attitudes toward education and and self uh self-reliance. So that's about it. Uh like I said, we're back. We're back in full full strength. Any questions?
Uh both yours ended?
No. Thank you, Dr. Lewis.
So, do you want to wait to the end, ask them both a question? Or do you want to ask individual question? I'm asking the board, because he's not finished with, are you finished with your report?
I'm finished with my.
President, you tell me.
No, 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 no.
We have a little more.
Okay, so, okay, we'll wait with the question.
Okay. I just want to be clear, this never left it. Dr. Lewis has been here, it's always been. We. Brought it back, and you can see, I I have thirty-nine on there. I just did this last week, so we have one more now with forty. So. I would like to just go on just to recap and review our student equity plan. We've already kind of heard this with um. VP Burger, VP Jones, talking about institutional set goals. So remember that our student equity plan is really the drill down. Uh version of, version of institutional set goals that are set for a three-year cycle. We look at who is our uh mostly impacted students. And the plans to uh service those students. So uh I'll just read this. The student equity. Uh the Compton Cost and Equity Plan twenty-two, twenty-five provides a guide to address equity and. Potential ways aligned with the college existing efforts and plans such as Compton College twenty-twenty-four Comprehensive Master Plan. As well as California Community College Chancellor's Office Vision for Success. And of course, we go over the five uh state-defined metrics as we've already heard tonight, successful enrollment. And pushing traffic, transfer level, admission math, persistence, transfer, and completion. So for our successful enrollment, our target population is males of color. Uh just want to mind, uh we don't have data on this yet. We're still really early. Like I said, we just were approved. Uh I think the board approved in December, last year, November, December. So this is just a recap of that, what we're doing. Uh the main thing is we want to increase the number of males of color enrolled in college. Uh by to three thousand one hundred and twenty. I think Dr. Banks' presentation had about seventeen hundred right now. Eighteen hundred right now, so, but it's improving, so we're on our way to that. And our target population is male of color for successful enrollment. For persistence, once again, males of color. Uh that's why it's so important, uh Dr. Banks' work that he's already presented on. Because these are a lot of our goals, and we want to do this uh increase by fifteen percent. A lot of our measurements are to increase fifteen percent across the board on a lot of these metrics. So you'll see that fifteen percent uh keeps coming up. Uh the, I can, completion of transfer of math and English, that's our black and Latinx students. You saw some of the. Uh statistics that VP Burger and VP Jones shared as well. So you can see why that's one of our main targets and the thirteen percent overall. Our transfer, males of color, and black students. So we want to increase a little by three percent. Um the increase number uh social degree transfer, sixty units program study, explore our students are earning thirty-plus units. So this is three percent to increase our target population. Completion, Latinx students and black students. These are all our students. Okay? Uh so we need to increase by number six percent for completion, especially we're coming up with funding and. Uh our whole harmless ending, when Dr. Curry?
Twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven. So this is for twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five. So. And then I just, uh after going through that, this is what we're doing. You've kind of already heard some of the things we're doing. So ensuring our students are given educational plans, their assigned pathway. Once again, that was already talked about in the uh previous presentation tonight. How important that is, that students are on track, they're in the right pathway, and they're getting through on time. Uh developing culture-responsive pedagogy and supplement instruction to Dr. Banks and Dr. Blanchard, who's here too. Um continuing professional development for faculty and classified staffs. We have to continue to work this SCA plan, look at our target. Um continue professional development for faculty and classified staffs. We have to continue to work this SCA plan, look at our targets and make sure the whole campus is involved in this, as was also previously stated. That's why it's good, this SCA plan. Uh this presentation is the end of the night, so you can see how it's all encompassing and everything that we're doing on campus. And then uh more student engagements through our Black and Males of Color Success Program. Out of those five uh metrics, blacks and those are color, I believe, were four out of five. So making sure that uh Dr. Banks' work is encouraged, is promoted, and we get students involved. That is it. So now, uh I will be happy to take questions on everything we presented.
Trustees, do you have any questions? Do we trustee con? Dr. Little?
Yes, a couple um questions. Um first is on the overall student that we have achieved. Do the students understand this integration of the different programs? Right, we would be other, because as we're hearing it, I just believe even overlap, we see you know, different responsibilities, but I'm just wondering, how are the students or you all have a sense either qualitative or just I've already asked about some climate change and that, but how are they experiencing it?
I don't know. Uh that that is a very good question. I don't think we've ever had an engagement for students on the SCA plan. And for them to understand how everything is working together. But that would be a great opportunity for us to do that. Uh and um probably working with Dr. Banks or maybe just any kind of our um PDS for students, that uh some kind of student engagement, getting ASG involved. Thank you for that. I I'm gonna look into that more. Uh Amari, do you have, have you know if we ever, um not you know, sorry, I didn't mean to call Amari out, but this, Amari's our dean in term dean. So we started talking about data, I was like, well.
Right, right. I I mean, I I think not, it's not specifically a part of C, right? But we do do things across the college, right? So we participated in the CSE, the Survey of Student Engagement um sense, other things that we can pull together, information to get a sense of how students understand the supports that are available at the college. Um but you know, as the Dell mentioned, something comprehensively targeted at C, we haven't, we haven't done, but we certainly, we certainly could look at something.
Just in hearing it tonight, the way in which you all, you know, right of pathways, who, you know, black and males of color, yeah, through the SCA. Um just thinking about the cumulative effect. And I think in isolation, they're very powerful, but when you start looking not only at the successful outcomes, but also where gaps. Or, you know, one person thinks within their area or domain, and and I do wanna applaud you all because it does take collaborative leadership and no one worrying about turf, because they're, you know, students come home. And so we're all gonna overlap. But I do think it it would be a powerful internal assessment to see how these are being experienced in integration. Um and then I did have a fist question. Just in terms of, from my own clarification. So it's open to the community, correct? And you do not have to be a student to attend the Thursday meeting, or do you have to be a student?
You have to be a student. Yeah, you have to be a student even to enroll in the FIS program.
Are you talking about the packed meetings or the FIS program meetings? Cause they're both on thirty, they're Thursdays.
Five students or students, five people of students.
The the community for the parole. No, that's open to the public.
That's open to the public. And that, and the public is the community resources, staff. And if there's any students that need resources, they can participate. And people from the community can participate as well.
So the pack is a separate meeting? And any formerly incarcerated can attend or not? Okay, and then that's a conduit, potential way to becoming a student. And then this, once you are a student, is the engagement and resources of those who self-identify as formerly incarcerated. Did we ban the box already and get part of our application?
Well, California has banned the box, but uh.
No, but I'm saying, so we self, they have to self-identify, I'm trying to. I'm just trying to see how they could do it.
So so he, the the key to this is that Dr. Lewis with his contacts with the uh probation parole, we're able he has a direct pipeline because they have their meet their original, their first meeting with those, those individuals at our campus. And so we're able to utilize that as our recruitment tool to get them involved, engaged with our, our college. The structure is as like the way it's set up, because we have those students on our campus and we have first opportunity to talk about our college. And so I think it's been working out well. That's why numbers are increasing, because they're coming to us. And then we're able to get them through the enrollment process and to be a part of the, our program.
And so that's the path. Okay, so that's what I just wanted to clarify. And but they have to be, you know, referred through, like we just know people who in the community who are formerly incarcerated and we wanna send them, is a different uh it's a different pathway. That's straight up admissions versus coming through a packed meeting, seeing others and then thinking about how they can become a.
There's both. So usually, the packing is are set up with the parole board bringing people of people on parole into our college to host this meeting. So they host this meeting at our campus, right? And so uh those students who are, they're there, they could be there for getting all kind of resources. But once they come to the college, if you're a student, a brand of Compton College student, then okay, come up with us to our meeting so you can learn more about the program.
And so that way, if there are some people that are not part of pack, that are not current students, there are resources here where we can send a master admission to say that we, our campus is welcoming to formerly incarcerated students.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I just wanna know the process because I know people who and programs, like Cal State LA, it has a program of people who are former LWOPs who are now, and it's a big movement. And they have a lot of conferences. Um I actually tried to present, and people have been released. And so I'm just trying to think about how we as a community college can maybe tap into some resources and student, potential students.
Yeah, and we also have direct referrals from probation. We have a uh partnership with probation, they call us, let us know they're coming. Uh students are our biggest mouthpiece too. If students are already in a program, know another uh student on probation, they bring them directly up to Dr. Lewis. And we talked about causing some role and we'll walk them right down to admissions and get the process started. So there's multiple ways that students can participate.
Trustee Valparais? Trustee Ronalds? Trustee Valdemore?
Yes, in in um in the the pact and the FIS program both. Do you, do you have um a female student or community member that participates?
No, 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 I I I'm laughing because our student, our student workers for the FIS program are female. And they are, I don't, I don't know, sometimes we might not have to work because they know, they get people right with the food, the housing, uh referrals. I heard someone, uh her name is Sky, she told her how to get their license back. And I was like, hey, I need you to write all this down, so I know what to do when you're not here, because they've been through the system. So yes, we got a a lot of female students in our FIS program.
Thank you, I appreciate you. That's all I have, personally.
I just have one question. Very good with both of you. You said, is the Harvard Regional, Harvard?
The Harbor Region Parole Division.
Okay, parole division. Do we work with, is that the parole division or is that the probation department on Compton?
That's parole division.
Are they included in the, in the?
Yes, the other one.
I didn't know what the harbor was. I thought the harbor was the other one.
Well, it's just the whole region, Harbor region. And yeah, they're involved. They're the ones that recruit the uh resources that attend the meeting. And also make sure that uh the parolees understand that it's mandatory for them to participate in that meeting. So they have a lot to do with the participation rate. You know, the attendance.
Thank you both so much. And I know FIS did not leave. But I'm, I'm just glad it has been researched, I'll say it like that, because that is vital to our community. And and I just wouldn't wait, no, so thank you very much.
And I'd like to add that we do provide our students with school supplies and they have access to all the basic needs that all the other students have. So they're integrated into the whole program, the campus program.
Did they get a chance to go to every table?
Yep, yes. Free lunch every day.
They know about our farmer's market?
Know about the farmer's market and twenty dollars.
And and we're, we've been working on grants, this initiative.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. We are at item twelve, moving right along. And item twelve. Item twelve is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Move to second. Trustee, do we have? Trustee, do we have any items to discuss? Student trustee con. Doctor look. Hold on, twelve point oh one. Is that it? Twelve point oh one, uh trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemoor.
Nothing.
Trustee Gavin, president Gavin, nothing. We can do one of two things, right? We can, is the consent agenda, we can. I know, we can make a motion, but do you wanna address the questions since there's only one?
Yeah, I just was wanting to get clarity on the minutes from that public fifth meeting. And it has the um attendance for the vote. And I was not present at the vote, but came from the meeting. So am I considered absent from the meeting or just absent from the vote?
Including in the meeting, we, in the minutes, they asked would you arrive to the meeting?
Right, I see, I see that it says that I arrived, but I'm just clarifying that I was still.
That you was here, here.
Cause there was no roll call after I arrived.
That's why I got to the meeting, but the board is all who, the minutes, that was set upon consent.
Well, I waited until then because it was related to who was in the attendance or not over the two meetings, so that's the reason I waited. Then one was for October the fifth meeting and one was for September meeting. So I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Oh, no further questions for any of the other items.
You can motion.
Yes.
Please have the online phone this early.
You send it back to all of us, yes? Yes, yes. That's a unanimous yes.
Right, we are now at action items. Item thirteen, action items. Thirteen oh one, administrative services. Compton Community College District Resolution Number ten dash seventeen dash twenty twenty-three C. Budget transfers, augmentations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Do we have any discussion? Trustee con. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemoor.
No discussion.
No discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't repeat it, I'm gonna start again. Thirteen oh two, administrative services, Compton Community College District Resolution Number ten seventeen twenty twenty-three D. For authorization for temporary interphone cash, born between funds fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion? Do we have any discussion? Trustee con. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemoor. President Calhoun, no, please place your online vote. Thirteen oh three, administrative services, contracts over one nine thousand three hundred CWDL. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Do we have any discussions? Student trustee con. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemoor.
No discussion.
President Calhoun, no discussion, please place. You've been quiet all day. You wanna count, go ahead, um.
So this is important, item regards to the.
That's what's been, do we have any discussion? I'm sorry, I left you off. I apologize.
So this is the item regards to the uh employee retention credit. We've been working this for a while with uh CW uh with CWDL. Next month, we bring a resolution forward. We wanna use by some of the funds that we get in turn from the federal government for this program, be able to support basic needs in the future. And so when we bring a forward resolution to the next court meeting, regards to that, this will be able to help sustain some of the programs we were able to offer, including the farmer market and also the one bill a day program in the average area table. So next month, you will see a resolution regards to this item, so I wanna show the connection.
Thank you, Dr. Curry. I'm sorry, I'm getting up your way. Thirteen oh four, administrative services proposition thirty, education protection account, EPA funding and expenditure. Can I get a motion? Do we have any discussion? Trustee cars. Student trustee car, sorry. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemoor. President Calhoun, no discussion, please place your online vote. Thirteen oh five, administrative services, contracts over one nine thousand three hundred million. St. John's Well, Child and Family Center Inc. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Do we have any discussion? Student trustee con. Dr. Little.
Just two quick questions. One, the tone is to scan for thank yous through twenty twenty-six. And is it blank? And it says with the opportunity to renew in that early three years, or is it depending upon?
It's every, it was a contract, it's probably should we be able to redo it uh within, after the three years? Or if we have language in there as well, if we want to be determined, we do another agreement, uh we can do that as well. So we have that to go. So we have that to go. Yes, it is.
Uh trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemore. President Calhoun, no discussion, please place your online vote. Item fourteen, discussion slash action, Doctor Curry will discuss the items and will request action if needed.
So item fourteen point zero one is our updated full-time equivalent students for Compton College. We also included the information, first of all, we're up. Regardless of our enrollment, so maybe the, our enrollment adds up uh today, I think it was like fifteen forty two or forty three. Uh so we're we're doing very well, uh by over, over twenty percent for the semester compared to last year at this time. We also provided as the board requested, the class modality, so you can see how many classes are in-person, synchronous remote, hybrid, and also asynchronous. Uh what's interesting about this, and I say that in a report, but this is to another community college to talk about uh how many classes they're offering on campus, they're offering close to twenty percent. It was very fascinating to compare to what we're doing at Compton College. Also provides you some of outreach activities that have been happening for the month of September and also number of participants. Also provides you up being of what we're doing in a call center, regards to follow-up with students, that also include information about the local center and the campaigns. So this is their data that the board trustees asked for, and we've been able to provide that this month and also previous. Uh is there any question in regards to our enrollment?
Any question, board members? Seeing uh we'll move right on.
Fourteen point zero two is our updated uh trustee area report cards, which is a part of our uh schedule for accreditation reports. So these are updated report cards which are posted on the uh Institute of Effectiveness website, it's something we do every year. So for your, each year, every year, you have your updated data, which is included of this board item for each other areas, and then also there's one for the trustees, uh for institutions on report card. We're currently working on the uh for preparing for our our uh legislative meetings in January, so we update the um. The the state uh official uh legislative report cards for our senate, senate members, and also congressional as well. And then we start working on our county supervisors as well, so and then all that information is posted on our website.
Item fifteen, grant items.
Okay, fourteen point oh three is the annual planning cycle report, I want to say thank you to Martin Williams, our N R B uh. Institute of Effectiveness, this is something we do every year based off our planning. And I'm very hopeful that we get accommodation on accreditation visit, side note. But every year we've been documenting our planning process at Compton, which shows through the planning process how dollars have been allocated. And so this is the report for this year's budget for the twenty three, twenty four year, and we begin now, starting funding for twenty four, twenty five. And you see what's been funded in additional dollars to support student success. And that's it, sorry, that concludes the discussion action session.
Item fifteen, grant items.
So item fifteen point zero one is granted recommended for approval by the board, same to fifteen point zero two. Uh and so these items will be, need to be approved by the board separately.
May I have a motion?
You have to do them separately, right?
Yeah, for, may I have a motion for fifteen oh one? Little motion, Doctor Moore second. Are, is there any discussions? Student trustee Khan. Doctor Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemore. President Calhoun, no discussion, please your online vote, please. May I have a motion for item fifteen oh two? Lopez moved it, who's second? Doctor Moore second. Are there any discussion? Trustee Khan. Doctor Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Ronald. Trustee Dopplemore. President Calhoun, no discussion, please place your online vote. We are at item sixteen, board policies and administrative regulations. Doctor Curry will discuss them each probably at one minute each.
I I just just want to just put, these are board policies, place sixteen point zero one is a schedule for the board policies. And then we have uh a speaker here for sixteen point zero two, the name of building and other persons.
Good evening, Doctor Curry and trustee board, um my name is Mika Black. For the record, uh my legal name is Termi Grilin Black, um so that if anyone was wondering if there, if it's the same person. It's the same person, um I'm here to speak today about policy uh thirty three twenty. Uh I wanted to get some clarification on this uh reapplication process. Um I think I misinterpreted what was going to happen. Uh it was our understanding, the Hollyfield family, that we would go before the uh. Facilities committee to discuss the amendment, we didn't realize that the amendment was already pre-decided. Um if so, we would like to revisit the change. Currently, as it states, it states that Hart Holyfield would be considered. We would like the amendment to state that Emily B. Hart Holyfield will be in consideration. Due to the fact that this name predates the building before it was taken down, this is not a new person for consideration. We simply want to transfer. One, one name to the other facility. Um if there is a process for that, we would like to know what that process is, so that we can continue to be in compliance, and that is all. Thank you very much.
Hi, board. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Benjamin Holyfield and Emily Hart, Hollyfield's husband. A number of years. And what I can't understand is why did, I look up here and I see the beautiful names on the plaques, it's your full name. Couldn't understand how you could move her name, this where it just says Hollyfield. Couldn't understand that. So I'm here tonight really to get an understanding. When we're even gonna do the right thing, and I say that because about. I've known most of you, a lot of you, for a long time. And I just can't understand this, not gonna keep coming back and keep dealing with it until the right thing happens. And the right thing is, just look at your own names. You simply, and look at it here. It was simply not added. Full name was simply not added. All those years that she was here, she was the first woman. And the first black woman on the Compton College Board of Trustees, by the way. The first one. And she, many doors opened up as under her leadership. And she loved this college, by the way. As a matter of fact, three weeks before she passed, we were meeting with Doctor Curry. Concerning the issue. Three weeks before. So you see, I have to continue until all we have to do is simply move it over. That's the old building. All we have to do is simply move it over, we have to create nothing. And I really thank you, and I thank the board for all that you've been doing, and Doctor Curry, thank you, sir. You sort of know people, I've been active in the community since nineteen sixty two. I'm I'm very active. And I know the people who have been active for a number of years, by the way. Or they know me, they know the name. And all we want to do is the right thing. And all this college wanted to, well, I'm sitting here and observe, want to do is the right thing by the students. And that's why we're bringing more students in and outreach, reaching for more students. Because we do at Compton College the right thing, isn't that right? I mean, you can't say yes. Thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to seventeen, information items. Doctor Curry.
So yeah, several information items in the board package, just want to highlight a couple. One is the seventy point zero nine, we had our accreditation of meeting greet yesterday with the accrediting team. In his day, we had the uh open forum, we had about sixty individuals participate, it's my understanding. We had about sixty individuals participate in an open forum, and so we're preparing now for the visit with a schedule for the week of February twenty 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 four. Also want to bring, this is to highlight that we have a schedule for updating five official management plan. Our goal is taking to the planning budget committee, uh seventeen point one two, to take to the planning budget committee in October, October twenty fourth. And then bring it forward to the board uh by November twenty first, four. And then finally, I just want to provide an update on the uh seventy one two six regarding legislation and how bills that we track. Uh trustee Calhoun asked a question earlier today to me in regards to uh legislation, as this to the presentation update they received. On the uh Community College trustee board, we want to let everyone know that we also track the bills. And we include that in the board package under item seventeen point two six, and that concludes the information items.
Item eighteen, future agenda item. Eighteen oh one. Compton Community College District Board of Trustees, future agenda item.
Okay, so the other item that we have for item number eighteen. The next morning, we have an update on building enrollment, update on the college court program. Enrollment Management Plan update, uh legislative report cards, is that meeting, then we also have an update on campus police. And then also the nurse update.
Nineteen, oral reports.
Yeah, I knew, uh first of all, say thank you to the staff for the work for the transfer fair, they happened on October fifth, it was a really nice event. With a lot of colleges, either Columbia University is here to recruit our students, and I would say thank you to the transfer center for their work and this to that. Uh next week, uh October twenty fourth at six o'clock P M in the multi-purpose room. We have the tenure dinner reception, uh tenure dinner for the faculty members who have achieved tenure. And also to recognize faculty members for their years of service, this is our seventh annual event. Uh on November the second, we have our Christmas breakfast from seven thirty to nine thirty A M. For our high school principals and uh district staff of our local district, so we're excited about that event. Uh we also have on the twenty fifth, we have a property and power documentary as we show here that Michael Tubbs and his team worked on. And that's at one thirty on October twenty fifth, uh the flyer will be out hopefully by tomorrow. Also want to let the board know that our E D O plan is basically done. The process for the equal opportunity plan has changed to the title five regulations. Where the district goes through their compensation process, they work on their plan. The board does not approve the plan until after the chancellor's office has been given the opportunity to provide feedback. And so right now, the advocacy has reviewed, the plan is gonna go uh the next couple of weeks to the chancellor's office. And our goal is to bring it back to the board for approval in the pathway. Which is what the board know, we are working on it, but the new process, it does come to the board first, it goes to the chancellor's office first for their feedback. And then comes back to the board once. Also want to say that today, uh thank you for proof of the agreement with St. John's. Today, we had a meeting with St. John's, talking about our advocacy for next year, requests funding for the state. Help support a new health center on our campus, it was a really, really good meeting, and we've provided update at the next board meeting. Regards to our uh our next steps in acting, and that concludes my report.
Student trustee Khan.
Um it's short, um this last week, I was at the A C C T um conference, and I did um two panels. The first one was the achievement dream, um was assisted with Doctor Curry. It was very stressful, but I was very happy that I did do it, I was the actual only uh pretty prestigious on that panel. Uh along with that, I also did another one for the virtual care that we have for Compton College, the twenty-four hour counseling service that um we use. And I was um partnered with B P Jones. And uh we spoke basically about all the data, well, she spoke more about the data, I spoke more in first, like about the personal experience that I did have. And I also have another uh panel that I'll be a part of on the nineteenth, that I don't have the Zoom yet, but Doctor Little will definitely give you that. Speaking for the women's caucus, I believe, so I'm I'm very excited about um continuing doing these um. Continue doing these panels, um and I am ready to continue doing it order, so if you guys want it, it'll be here, and you can definitely.
Just want to say thank you so much to the entire staff, Doctor Curry administration, our students, our community members. Um I too have the pleasure of attending the A C C T conference and participated on a panel. Around equity, student success with equity. And as we see across the country, we assault on diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. And the ways in which access to equitable education is being attacked. It is important to remember our responsibility and our purpose, and thank you again, Mr. Holyfield. Um for reminding us about the legacy and advocacy. Uh trustee Emily B. Hart Holyfield and the work that continues, and there's a statement that. You know, history doesn't mean self-healing things with the history. So it's not accidental when things come full circle. So our advocacy is absolutely necessary, and was very happy to share the collective effort of Compton College. Thank you again, Doctor Curry, and President Calhoun, and our other trustees who attended. Um talking about the difference it makes around women's security, housing insecurity. Um when you have programs like this or um black and and males of color. When you have faculty partnering, um document invalid here still. Um but faculty partnering with the administration and committed to student learning and success, and we work together, I think is a vital. Um message to create before us, and I think um as student trustee Khan said, I think it's the embodiment of our work. He will be sharing with our California Community College's Women's Caucus, it's called an empowerment series. So really looking at gender expectations and stereotypes and navigating politics, pain, power. And again, no matter where we fall, as a former student here and as a community member. This work is real serious, it's real life outcome, and so I just want to commend everybody for our continued work. And look forward to um. Increased enrollment and and positive outcomes in it, thank you. I'll be very, I'll be very quick, um, I had the opportunity, um, to attend, um, the Colleging Career um, conference or workshops, I guess, um, at Paramount High School. And, um, it was, it was very, um, enlightening to walk in and see like a gym full of students and to see, um, you know, students lined up at the desk, or the, um, the booth or the table, you know, for Compton, um, um, Compton College, so, you know, shout out to street team, the success team, um, our, um, our student, um, advocates, they were there doing their thing. Um, I was trying to help recruit from the back, but I was letting, I, I was letting them do their thing up front. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend the, um, the A C C T conference, um, in Vegas as well. And it was, um, um, during that, it was Dr. Curry confirmed. Um, it was very enlightening to attend some of those other, um, breakout sessions and just hear some of the other approaches and, um, strategies that some of the other community colleges are doing, um, for their students, and the report back from Dr. Curry was that a lot of those, um, things we are doing and providing those services for our students here at, um, at Compton, and just to highlight, some of those things were, um, career opportunity involvement, whether that is, you know, trade, um, basic needs, transfer level, English and math. I know we discussed a little bit about that tonight, but just, um, the proactive approach that we're taking, not that we're just providing those things, but we are proactively providing those, um, services and programs to our students, and of course, um, more importantly, which is like near and dear, is just like the adult learners, right? So that's a growing population, that's a growing, um, segment of our student body and population. And when we're, um, faced with, um, the challenge of improving, um, our numbers, um, looking at that segment of students is that, again, like I said, the, you know, the proactive approach and what we're doing is to meet those students like where they are and welcoming them to our campus and offering some of the classes that we have. So being able to confirm by Dr. Curry that we're already doing that, but the proactive approach that we're taking here at Compton College. So, um, that was just very heartwarming for me, and just again, a shout out to the faculty staff, the students, the board, and also Dr. Curry, for thinking outside of the box and being creative with those efforts, so that's all I have, President.
Before I went to A C C T, I went to, uh, D I A in San Diego. Oh, my goodness. You weren't there, you missed the truth. The panels that they had. My staff was there, and they were good too. I didn't sit with the staff because I wanted the staff to be able to talk among themselves, you know, so I went to another table to sit. I didn't want them to think I was honing in on their conversations and stuff like that, I wanted them to feel free, that they could talk about whatever they want to talk about, without a board, and then we're sitting at that same table. And they said, oh, no, you could sit there, I said, mm-mm, no way. So I set at a different table, but that, that was a, a great conference. Doctor B U L L, boom. Oh, my goodness. You should get the slides uh, from his conversation and, and what he talked about, and then there was a, a panel with Doug Moore from a union. That's who they were, and he was talking about a relationship that he had where his union members can go to college and they're doing a a resolution or M O U, to be able to go to college, domestic workers, right, hotels, yeah, so that was a a great idea to hear about that, and also them classes, but that, that was good. And, uh, Dr. Little, she was, uh, very good, she, she did a panel, weren't you? Yeah, yeah, and, uh, right, and Dr. Little with A C C T, uh, she was good, our student trustee, oh my goodness, she was good, but level up, level up. All I can say is wow, level up. And we should do that again, we should do that again. Exactly, that was like, I just sat there, and then our student trustee was up there, I said, okay. And then she asked me to record it, right, and so I, it was so funny, I recorded the whole speech. Everybody talking, but she only wanted me to record her, she said, oh, you probably used up all my battery, but it was so funny. It was so funny, I told her, crap it, I'm sorry, but that level up, it was, it was really good. So, I ran for office for the board of directors at large, but I didn't win this time, but I'm gonna go again, I don't give up. And, uh, I just wanna say, the panel that everybody was on, it was good, you, you truly missed it if you didn't come, I know we've been to a lot of different conferences and we get tired, but sometimes these conferences that you don't go to, you miss something, but everything is online and you'll be able to get it. And I knew I was gonna forget, but I forgot, so. Capsy, we're going to Capsy this week, and I forgot the title of it.
California Association for Black Student Educators, but it's Defying the Odds.
That's it, that's what I wanted to know the title, Defying the Odds. So I don't know who's going from out that way, but if you're going, I'll see you there, Capsy is is, is an excellent program. You really get to hear about unapologetically about African-American males and females. And everybody comes from trustees, from colleges, the K twelve, to CEOs, to presidents, to the teachers, to faculty. They all show up, and they are unapologetically very good, and it's one other thing I had to say, but since I forgot it, and it's almost eight twenty. And, uh, Dr. Curry took that shot today, I guess it's working on it. It's gonna be okay, Dr. Curry, don't call off sick tomorrow, okay? Some people catch, I know you say you're not sick, but. Yeah, I might have to take the shot too, but I was gonna take it today, and I'm glad I didn't because I'm going to a conference, so I'll wait till I come back. And then that way, if any after effects, I'll be at home. So, but I just wanna say thank you staff, thank you faculty, thank you every, oh, there was one, there was one, um, of the seminars, like, my mouth dropped open. What was the one I, I gave you, Dr. Curry, this college is working with the faculty about tenure, and they're trying to change everything, I, I'm sorry. It was like, huh, and so they're changing the rules on the faculty and faculty that is tenure. And when they changed it, there was a couple of people that didn't like it and didn't adhere to it, and so they left and they were like, they were glad the person left, and I was like, that's why my mouth really dropped open, because they were trying to change the the tenure that people have, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and, and all like that, and I said, okay, whatever it was, but people asked a lot of questions, but they said that the union worked with them on doing it. And said, yes, it's a college back east though, okay, it's not a California college. I thought I would say that, but, uh, thank you all. Oh, wait, close, close, somebody asked me to close, um. Yes, go ahead, uh, Dr. Little. The mayor of Carson, oh, trustee Lopez. Okay, while she does that, I would also like to, uh, close in the memory of Squire A. Adams. He was the husband of Susan Adams, an, uh, community activist in Compton. And his name is Squire A. Adams, and, uh, his memorial service is at Emmanuel Reform Church on October the twentieth at ten A M in the city of Paramount. Okay, I thought you were gonna say that, huh, oh, okay, well, and then, uh, we wanna send our condolences out to Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, whose grandson, uh, passed away on this past Sunday, and his name is Kyle Carter. And so we'd like to close in those two memories. Of, of those two, but the next meeting, next regular scheduled board meeting is November twenty-first of twenty twenty-three. Close session begins at five, open session begins at six P M. Nothing else left to be said, this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty, eight twenty P M. Thank you, everybody.